Good morning. Welcome to the meeting, the Perry County Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, July 25th. Go call please.
Dong?
Here.
Melis?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Yes?
Here.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Commissioner Patiglioano is absent today and she did notify us. Aguilar?
Here. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. A reminder to please put your cell phones on silent or buzz or something other than we can hear. This time we'll do the approval of minutes of the July 11th meeting.
Make a motion, we approve the July 11th, 2018 minutes.
I'll second.
Dong?
Yes.
Melis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Item number four, continued public hearing, special use permit number PSP 17-076.
Good morning, Chairman Aguilar. This project is going to be continued again. There's still some unresolved details need to be worked out. And this will be continued until September 26th. Two months.
Do we need to open the public?
What if people came today, didn't know it was going to be continued?
Was it already opened last time? Yes, so just continue it.
Just continue it? Then we need a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion that we continue. Special use permit PSP 17-076.
I'll second that.
Uh, wait, do the Chair, do we date certain September?
September 26th.
To September what?
26th.
26th.
Wednesday.
2018.
Second meeting in September. Wednesday.
And we had a second, that was Elliot.
Dong?
Uh, yes.
Melis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, we will continue with the parcel map public hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any of one of these items requests that it be pulled for sep- separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any of these items unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. So we have, uh, item A is tentative parcel map number PPM 18-023. Item B, PPM 18-009. Any of these need to be moved? No. Then we will go ahead and open the public hearing. And there's no staff presentation. There's no comments. And we will close the public hearing. Yes? Is it item number, uh, on, we're on 5A and 5B? This is, uh, tentative parcel map number PPM. Okay, thank you. Uh, so the public hearing is closed, so we will have the, a vote on each item.
I'll make a motion, we approve the category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction and conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 18-023 and waiver of final map.
I'll second that.
Dong?
Yes.
Melis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
PPM 18-009.
I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations 15061B subsection 3, the general rule, um, and to conditionally approve a tentative parcel map number PPM 18-009.
Second that motion.
Dong?
Yes.
Melis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, I left my coffee in the lobby and I really need it today. I'll be back in one second.
Hurry.
I saw somebody drinking out of it.
Just hope it's not empty.
Or that it is more full.
Uh, through the Chair, will the record reflect that Mr. Elliot has returned to the?
Sorry about that.
So Elvis left the building and he's returned.
A good cup.
All right, uh, at this time we will move on to item six, public hearing. And there are three items on this one, which is a special use permit number PSP 18-042, PSP 18-043, PSP 18-044, AT&amp;T Streamline Engineering and Design.
Thank you. Dana Metlin, RMA Planning. These projects are to allow the installation of three AT&amp;T 100-foot tall cellular towers that will have a monopine camouflage design. And they are in three different locations in the county, uh, near Springville and Three Rivers. These are the hearing notification maps. All of these projects were noticed according to the law. Staff did receive one inquiry from a neighbor regarding PSP 18-044, and that is the one that's in Three Rivers. And she was, uh, con- concerned about the easement providing access to this parcel for utilities and, uh, access to the tower. These are the vicinity maps for these three locations. Site number one, PSP 18-042 is located at the north of the intersection of Wrangler Drive and Coyote Drive, which is south of Springville. Site number two, PSP 18-043 is located on the north side of Yocul Valley Drive, approximately 1,800 feet west of Balch Park Road, and this is northwest of Springville. And site number three is PSP 18-044, which is located approximately one mile west of the intersection of South Fork Drive and Grouse Valley Road in Three Rivers. These projects are all categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Title 14, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. Entitlement is found in Section 162B whereby radio, microwave, television, and cell towers are allowed in all zones. Special use permits are required for all towers over 75 feet in height. Or less if in an urban development boundary. These projects, um, are consistent with these relevant general plan policies. These are the zoning maps. Site one, PSP 18-042 is located in the planned development foothill mobile home zone, which is PDFM. And per the general plan, the site is located in the foothill growth management plan, the Tulie River Development Corridor, and the land use designation is foothill mixed use. Site number two, 18-043, is in the AF zone, which is foothill agriculture. And the general plan is in the foothill growth management plan, and the land use designation is foothill agriculture. Site number three, which is 18-044, is zoned exclusive agriculture, 80 acre minimum. And this is within the urban development boundary of Three Rivers, and the land use designation is agriculture grazing. This is the site plan for PSP 18-042. And the tower will be located at the, if I can get this to work. Anyhow. There it is, in, in this general area on top of this hill. And that's a three acre parcel on a 900 square foot leased portion. And you can see that it's going to be a monopine design. This is 18-043. And this is the one that is just north of Balch Park. And the tower will be located in this general area of this parcel. An 88 acre parcel. And again, the monopine design. And this is PSP 18-044. And again, this would be located approximately in this area on top of this hill. This is a 19 acre parcel. And all of these projects are uniform with regard to the area, equipment, height, et cetera. They're all 100-foot tall monopines with antenna, equipment shelters, emergency lighting, 50 kilowatt generators, and a 500 gallon propane tank. All of these sites will be surrounded by a six-foot high chain link fence topped with barbed wire. And double access gates will allow entry and signage will be informational only. And access to these sites is provided by a 10-foot wide non-exclusive access and utility easement. And that concludes staff's report. And we have recommendations for approval of the three projects, one at a time.
Questions of Dana?
Is this part of the government program to improve internet access in rural areas?
It is.
Is that response to that?
Right.
At this time, we will open the public hearing. Somebody wishing to speak on either of these three? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address and which one you're speaking about.
My name is Sandy Graven. I live at, on the same property where the cell tower is being built, basically on the road going up to the cell tower. It's
Which one am I talking about here?
45244, South Fork Drive.
Three Rivers.
Is this the Three Rivers one?
Three Rivers?
Yes.
Okay.
State, state the address again, please.
45244, South Fork Drive. Property B. And, um, I do have quite a few problems with this, and I called Dana, I don't know, 10 days ago or something. I've been fi- trying to find information on this for months. And I was told that by the owner, that I wasn't allowed to know anything, that I was not allowed to talk to AT&amp;T, not allowed to talk to PG&E, and, um, not allowed to know anything about this. And I've only been gotten, gotten any information by going directly to the county, and I found one good source there who was willing to talk to me about it. So I only found out about the special use permit by calling to find out if there was a special use, um, plan in place, and that's when I found out it was. So I don't like the way this is all happens, that it's in secrecy as if, and...
Was she part of the notice?
My land partner got the notice. But, you know, 10 days, it doesn't give much time to really find out what's going on. And a part of the problem was, I think, on my end, because this easement for PG&E does not show up in my title documents. So I assumed, ever since I've heard about this, that somebody would have to come to me and work that out. And I finally went to the courthouse and found the easement. It's in there. My title people just left it out. So it does show 600-foot easement for this power line going right through the middle of my property. And, uh, when I talked to Dana, I wish we'd talked more, but you told me not to worry because it was all going to be underground conduits and so on. And when I got these maps, it's only underground conduits on the very top on the property that the tower's going to be installed on. But right through the middle of my property, it's overhead, and it's very steep ground. So I'm curious how that power line, I'm sorry, I'm sort of emotional about this, but it's, how that's going to be installed without doing a lot of environmental damage on these steep slopes? So does that kind of get done by helicopter or digging up a huge amount of, you know? Anyway, I've been trying to get ahold of somebody, the guy at PG&E, to at least find out those details. And he's not calling me back so far, so it's just very frustrating. I think one of the main really tangible things I have to say about it is, um... So it's really four properties that came, were broken out of this 80 acre parcel. And this is a private road that goes up, very steep land, um, about a half a mile. The road's private, it's steep, and it's really fragile. And I really would like some sort of guarantee that it's in the project to at least rehab or repave the road or whatever after the construction is done. Do you have any idea?
Through the Chair, we'd like the applicant engineer to answer these questions for, for some commenting.
For Ms. Graven?
That's it?
Ms. Graven? Is that you?
Yeah, Graven.
Well, the, the AT&amp;T representative is here, and he can answer these questions.
Oh. Well, that would be good.
Do you have anything to add to it, or?
Well... You know, I'm, I'm disturbed because this is really going to affect property values and my use shed and environmentally and, um... Those are my concerns. I thought there would be more people here to speak to these issues. There were a couple more things. So is, is it true that once a cell power is in place, it can be increased by 20 feet in height at any time without public review?
No, that's not true.
Okay, I was just reading that. And, um... I'm wondering why underground conduits are at the top of this project, but not on my lower slopes where it would be easy to do that? And, um, I wonder who would have an answer to that? That would be... Okay.
We'll give them a chance to answer, and then if, uh, then we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Because that's, you brought up the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That would be good.
Thank you.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Commissioner and, uh, and council members. Larry Hopey, representing AT&amp;T Wireless. My address, uh...
Your name?
Larry Hopey.
That's right.
Address is 5220 Valverde Road, Loomis, 95650. As far as addressing utility comments first, uh, yeah, per, per our research and title reports we pulled, there is an existing, uh, utility easement. I was confused. I thought it was Southern California Edison, maybe it's PG&E, but that, that easement has been in existence for, I think, sometime since the 80s. And, um, as far as the design of that utility route, it is, uh, because of that easement, it's actually the utility companies, whether it's PG&E, PG&E or Southern Cal, to provide utilities to the location where the site is. So they're the ones that'll actually produce that design. It will be overhead, obviously, and it, it will be installed by them, because they will own that line up to the property where the meters are installed, so. And then where the meters are installed is where, obviously, we call our point of connection, and we'll tie in and bring it underground to the site. But the, uh, the actual line itself is, uh, I mean, for some reason, years ago, obviously, they designed to bring power up the top of the hill and never did it. But at this point in time, now that they have, you know, other folks, the property owner, obviously, wants a service also, since we're bringing utilities up that far. So, uh, that's kind of why it's, it's overhead. It's owned by Southern Cal or PG&E, not owned by AT&amp;T, and will be installed by them per their regulations, so. Um, any questions as far as how they install it would have to be directed to them. I don't know if we've, we go through utility coordination process where we get the designs. I don't know where we're at in that process, but obviously, before we go to construction, we have approved designs from the utility provider. As far as, I'm sorry, what was the other question? I was trying to think. Oh, as far as the, uh, the condition of the road, um, yeah, obviously, it's not, it's paved partway up, I believe. Yeah, I've been up there multiple times. Yeah, and the road's in, obviously, in pretty good shape now. We always, um, obviously leave the road in better condition than we do it. If we create any damage, we fix it. That's something we typically have in a lease agreement with the property owner, is, uh, is dealt with as far as the road itself, and if we damage the road, we fix it. And I know Carol's actually raised that question to us, and so that will be addressed in the lease agreement with the, with the property owner. Yes, well, that's, that's what we're clarifying now, is obviously where, matter of fact, the question just came the other day, is where everybody's, whose property the road falls on, and if it's a, if, I don't know if it's, if it's all a private road, I'm assuming, all the way up to the site? Yeah, so that's what we're, we're working out with Carol right now as far as addressing that, so. Well, she will, because she's down below you and's got to travel up that section.
Has she addressed the commission?
Through the Chair, can you address all comments to the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So, um, it, it, through the Chair, it, it does sound like, uh, through this lease agreement that any impacts to the easement itself will be repaired by AT&amp;T. And it does sound like, uh, PG&E or Southern California Edison will run the power lines above the ground, and when their point of connection comes in, AT&amp;T's, it'll be undergrounded from that point forward. So, um, I don't know how much influence, uh, AT&amp;T would have over PG&E or Southern California Edison in regards to undergrounding power lines, uh, but, uh, they could always ask.
Yeah, the problem is the, the terrain there. It's, it's very steep and, and, uh, there's really no way to run underground conduits up that hill in any direct fashion, obviously. And I was just going to, uh, address the, the visual impact and, and the, and the property comment that the, the folks had a question on. You know, I think this actually adds value up there. This is an area which has absolutely no cell coverage, has absolutely, I mean, as far as internet, and, and this is providing cellphone coverage and internet. It's in a location where it's not really visible to any, anybody that lives on a hill. It's actually backup behind them. And I think it's a great location. We, we spent a lot of time looking at this, trying to find a location where we could keep it, uh, out of, uh, everybody's view shed and, uh, and still provide the coverage in the valley that we need to, uh, obviously have the site there.
Who owns the land?
Carol Nichol.
Carol Nichol, okay.
Any other questions for me?
Hey, Dana, could you put up, uh, Exhibit A, site plan overall? So that's a circuitous route up to your site, is that right? And that, and so they're going to run a power line along that road, or that, or that easement?
Not along the road. There's actually an easement that, it's per the title report on our drawings, we showed the existing utility.
Where is that easement?
And it kind of goes straight up the hill.
Right up the hill?
Yeah.
And where is the homeowner? Where do you live?
I live, that's straight up the hill section goes right through the, around my property. And so I do live.
Dana, do you know where, where she lives?
Is it over your house, or is it just over your land?
Not exactly.
It's over my building site where I was building.
Should be going for Dana.
Were you notified?
You wouldn't build it in an easement anyway, ma'am.
Do you live on one of these parcels here?
We should have the, uh...
That's, those maps really don't...
Well, this is the parcel where the cell tower is going to be.
Could we have her up there as well?
Do you live on one of these other?
My, in the chase, my property is about 50 feet from that cell tower site.
Going to, to the right?
North, or west?
Going downhill and to the east.
But this property belongs to Carol Nichol, right?
It does.
Where the tower?
Right next to her property. I've got 20 acres.
And you said the realtor did not address the fact there was an easement there when you bought the property?
I think the title company.
Oh, the title.
Let it out.
Okay.
So... I have no idea whether they did that. Is it real or is the history of this place always?
We, we can't, uh, address, uh, easements and title issues. That's, we're just land use issues. So, uh, as whether or not where the easements go, that's, that's under, not under our authority.
I understand.
We can address issues, so, but, uh, is that correct, Dana? You weren't listening, were you? I said, we only do us land use issues. We don't address legal issues for reference to easements. And, and actually, we have no control over Southern California Edison, Caltrans, school districts, so they kind of do what they want to do. So I don't know how we can help, is that's my question.
Well, it sounds like, too, you were going to extend power to your new place, so this is, uh, extending power to another property, and you may ha- it's, you may have to move your building site, is what it sounds like.
I already have power to my place.
Oh, you have it?
I already have it.
But you didn't know where the easement was, then?
No, and I didn't expect anybody here would, you know, attempt to solve that. I realize that is a problem.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
I had a couple other little...
Go ahead and come back to the microphone, please. And, uh, anyone having questions for her, please?
And say your name again, please.
What was your name again?
Just one little question.
Sandy Graven?
Yeah, Sandy Graven, Three Rivers. I've heard that there's something like a shadow effect. If you're too close to a cell tower or a wireless tower and kind of downstream from it, and I
and kind of downstream from it, and I was wondering if that's true? That those closest...
Address the commission and then we'll ask him to address, answer your questions.
Sorry, I haven't been here before.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, I, I think there might be some issue that those of us closest on, below this slope might not even get that benefit of this wireless tower. So I was wondering if there's any truth to that.
Have him come back up.
You had a second question? Take your time, please.
I think another, just in that category of things, a lot of neighbors are speaking about getting high-speed internet out of this tower and I'm not sure that's what it's going to be, so I would like that addressed. It's just going to be a wireless connection and not a high-speed. And otherwise, thank you, I think you've helped me at least understand some of what's going on here. And is there some way that I can get directly in touch with the power people? That's something I'd like to know as well, because...
Well, I think it's SCE, I don't believe it's PG&E anyway. I think it's SCE would be your company.
Southern California Edison.
Okay, sorry, I just misspoke, but is there a way I could get...
Well, you can call the Tulare office, you know, that's, anybody can do that and they'll get you to the right person on that.
So they should get me in touch with the person in charge of this project? Okay, thank you.
They have specific, I'm developed land, they have specific people that do development, okay? And there's an engineer that's assigned to that. And probably you can call Dana, she might have a better phone number because you end up calling Rosemead and it's a nightmare, so.
The gentleman from A, AT&amp;T, they must have an interface to Edison to do their project, so it'd be the same person, wouldn't it?
So Mrs. Raven, maybe you need to talk to the AT&amp;T guy after we vote on this. Okay?
You're the AT&amp;T guy, you don't have a name.
I'm Larry. Yeah, we do have, obviously, a project planner, we're working with it. Like I said, I think it is SCE, like you said. And we can relay that information either to Dana or to the, for instance, the committee. So, as far as shadowing, I mean, yes, there is possibility, I mean, that always does exist, it could be, but this site is being designed, we're obviously at the top of the hill and, and when the, our engineers, those are the guys that design these sites, they use stuff like, we call it down tilt, where they tilt the antennas down. I mean, one of our big coverage areas, we're trying to provide is for the houses within this kind of segregated community, I guess. And, and it's, it's basically, the site's being designed to eliminate, obviously, the shadows and provide coverage to those houses in the community. And then there was one other...
The question was whether it included internet or just wireless?
Yes, so obviously, internet's the, the big portion of this. This is actually what the project is federally funded for, is to provide high-speed internet. It's, it's not just like what you're getting over your cellphone. It's going to have a point-to-point system where the, the folks would actually sign up, have a dish on their house, and it would be a point-to-point system. And yes, it will be high-speed internet, that's the whole reason behind this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on either of these three? Then we will close the public hearing. There are three motions. First one is 18-042.
They all make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulations, Sections 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved special use permit, PSP 18-042.
I'll second that motion.
Gong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Wilatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Next one is special use permit, PSP 18-043.
I'll make a motion, we approve the category exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or a conversion of small structure and conditionally approved special use permit, PSP 18-043.
I'll second.
Gong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Wilatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
And special use permit number PSP 18-044.
I'll take the third, verse one. So I'll make a motion to approve the categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, Class 3 pertaining to new construction and conversion of small structures and conditionally approved a special use permit, PSP 18-044.
I'll second that motion.
Gong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Wilatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before you go, the AT&amp;T, will you talk to Ms. Ravens?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you. The next item for consideration is minor modification, MIM 18-021 to PSP 89-120.
Chairman Aguilar, Commissioners, I'm Aaron Bach. Let me get my title right here. Interim Assistant Director, Economic Development and Planning. And before you today is the minor modification, MIM 18-021 to PSP 89-120. And this is for West Tulare Ag Holdings with their agent Innovative Agricultural Services LLC. And we are here today to answer the age-old question, which came first, the dairy or the egg? All right. So by way of background, the site is 320 acres, owned by West Tulare Ag Holdings. As stated, it was approved through a PSP 89-120 for an 88-acre, 2,514 animal unit dairy operation. And that was approved back in August 1990. There was an application for amendment in 2001, which never finalized. The applicant is Innovative Agricultural Solutions, that's the agent. The location is seven miles southwest of the city of Tulare, in the heart of Tulare County, between Tipton and Corcoran, out in dairyland. And it's located specifically south side of Avenue 176, between Roads 64 and 56. So as you can see, it's pretty much smack dab between Tipton and Corcoran, maybe a little bit more towards Corcoran, but pretty much out in dairy country, south of the city of Tulare, seven miles. All right, so history-wise, this site has been in dairy operations prior to the Rural Valley Lands Plan, 1978, for several decades. The prior existing dairy had been closed out under the 1985 federal buyout program. PSP 89-120 was approved with a negative declaration on August 2nd, 1990. It's been operating since 1990 with no violations and the amended permit failed to process and currently the dairy is in bankruptcy. So again, plus or minus 2,514 animal units, 88 acres of a 320-acre site. There are three in-line lagoons, 232 acres available for land application crops. The 2001 application for, and amended use permit ceased or failed or was withdrawn. But the project would be applicable nowadays for an amended one under our new animal confinement facilities program, so... But currently, the dairy is bankrupt. So the overall site plan basically moves what was the dairy facility southwards for the egg processing facility. There would be no necessary land application or lagoons required for the egg processing facility and Warren Hutchings and Innovative Ag will go through that whole process for you to show that there's actual benefit environmentally to this area for this project. So the minor modification itself includes three new 111 by 680 pullet houses. There'll be a plant, office, dock, cooler and dry storage structures. There'll be one barn structure, seven new, and potentially three egg-laying facilities, 100 by 650 feet. So that's the site plan for the minor modification. The... Minor modification itself is a state-of-the-art, works. State-of-the-art egg-laying and processing onsite facility provides 120 jobs onsite, that's an additional 100 jobs from the existing facility. Only one other site in California in Kern County, the Kern County Facility or the KCF Site, approved and operating. Our analysis is based on that facility's existing SEQA analysis as well. They are proposing 3 million plus chickens in laying houses and 1 million plus chickens in the three pullet houses. Now, the findings for a minor modification as required under Section 18 include minor physical changes to an existing in what I would liken to an intensive animal-related agricultural operation. So the dairy itself is already an intensive agricultural operation. We are just modifying it to chickens and maybe doing better under SEQA. Applicant is not in violation of a use permit or any other laws, state or federal. Is not increasing bovine animals or herd sizes under our settlement agreement. There are no Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board permits required. Waste is held onsite and then disposed of within 72 hours. The minor modification would be consistent with the use permit conditions. We are not changing any conditions or requirements and the minor modification would be recorded and notice of exemption will be posted. Those are all the requirements for a minor modification which this project meets. But we are here today to verify that that is something that the planning director could sign or in the alternative, that the planning commission would like to approve. So is the project consistent with the general plan? Yes, it's consistent with the general plan because the project is Valley agriculture, no alterations required. It is AE40 zoning for intensive agricultural use. This is an intensive agricultural use and this project was already pretty much in place prior to the Rural Valley Lands Plan. The AE40 zone requires a use permit to, for more than 500 birds for consideration of smoke, fumes, dust, odor and other hazards. That's exactly from our zoning code. So those concerns were already addressed under the existing conditions of approval and a negative declaration for the bovine facility. So we go a little bit better in our analysis now under SEQA, but those considerations are addressed. The analysis for the categorical exemption in this poultry facility's project features addresses those concerns better. The conditions set forth in the planning commission resolution number 6748 shall remain in effect for the site unless modified herein and the planning staff is not recommending any changes to those conditions. So zoning notification consistency, normally minor modifications are signed by the planning and development director under Section 18 with no notification of the surrounding neighbors nor publication in the Visalia Times Delta for transparency reasons. We wanted to be consistent with Section 16 and we did reach out to the Air District. The county notified property owners within 300 feet, which in this case equals about a half a mile if you go out to the full APNs. And the hearing and decision by the planning commission was noticed through the Visalia Times Delta. So as far as SEQA baseline conditions, if you look at the existing dairy facilities, there's 32 stalls, 88 acres of cow pens, so 1,500 by 2,000 feet of manure. There is a solar field directly adjacent, there are, which is about 3.4 acres, and there are 22 acres of ponds and silage on the existing site. So that's our baseline condition. The county used the KCF ISM and D for analysis regarding SEQA, the existing SEQA analysis for the Kern site. The existing dairy has solar, therefore potential to power the minor modification by solar. All waste is self-contained onsite and disposed of within 72 hours. What does that mean? That means there is no onsite composting of manure, litter or poultry carcasses. There is no Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board requirements for Form 200, Notice of Intent or NPDES, NPDES, which is a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit. So there is basically no Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board permitting required for this facility, which would comply with the tentative waste discharge requirements, General Order for Poultry Operations, Order R520160087. Dairies in general, according to a Smithsonian magazine article, takes 10 times more resources than an egg-laying facility. So that's just the background for SEQA with such a project as this one. So the dust, odor and other hazards are contained in the laying houses, pullet houses and attainment of thresholds was originally attained in the existing negative declaration, NCAOs, of the existing use permit. So this is actually better than the baseline under SEQA. New analysis conducted based on the KCF facility shows no increase of pollution greater than the existing use permit. So in regards to traffic, the Air District has their thresholds, which this project falls under, and of course, this is a traffic threshold for the county's general plan. There will be initial temporary impacts, one truck per day for two trips for the flock, the generation of the flock, 15 feed truck deliveries to grow the flock, roughly 30, 32 trips, 18 trucks per, and then that's a temporary impact. So longer-term impacts are 18 trucks per day, 36 trips of manure removal and egg processing, 60 personal vehicles per day, which would result in 120 trips. So we are suggesting that people do carpool, but again, this was based on what we received from the Kern facility as far as what they were generating. Generated approximately 94 in total, 188 trips. If you do the math, that's about 127 average daily trips and approximately 80 existed on the site previously, so that's only a net increase of 47 additional average daily trips. But we don't necessarily look at that for SEQA purposes. Our general plan looks at 100 peak hour trips threshold before we need a full-blown traffic study. Worst-case scenario, let's throw all 94 trips on the road at one time in the first 15 minutes of that peak hour. You still don't get to 100. More than that, though, what we found as far as farm labor and as far as these operations, they don't operate at the peak times. They operate before both peaks, before the morning peak and before the afternoon peak. Or if they do go past the afternoon, it's into the nighttime, so they will not be generally on the roads at the same time. Now, TCAG has a traffic count, it's pretty much all over the county. Road 80 was the only traffic count I could find in the area since there are so few trips out there. And at peak, they had three, three trips. So not a lot of, not a lot of traffic out there. This project itself is two less heavy-duty trucks, but seven more light trucks in the KCF facility, so there's no reason for any mitigation for this project. So, there's no reason for any mitigation for this project and there's no exceedance of any thresholds, both for the air district standards nor the county's general plan's thresholds. So, I'm going to let Warren talk to you more about water because I'm sure that would be your next greatest concern. But what I did find from a National Science Academy study was that in general, if you look at land and you compare eggs to dairy, as far as orders of magnitude, it's about five times less of an impact to land. If you look at irrigated water, order of magnitude half or, or more than a dairy. Greenhouse gases are less, reactive nitrogen less and, but, but it seems that people do choose to derive calories from dairy at an order of magnitude of 12% more. So, they, they, they drink more milk and they, they eat more beef. But that's why our recommendation today, starters, is eat more chicken. Anyway, but the real recommendation for this commission before I let, set Warren loose on you is that the approved the categorical exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA pursuant to Title 14 California Code of Regulations 50061B3 and approved the minor modification number MIM 18-021. That concludes staff's report and with that, I'm going to let Warren give you more facts
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner and fellow board members. I'm Warren Hutchings and I am located at 5706 West Ashland Avenue in Visalia. Associate on the team of getting this permitted, Kathy Parker from Insight and Bill Sweeney from West Teleria Ag Holdings. Today, we're talking about eating more chickens. Technically, it's eggs. We're, we're producing eggs. We're, we're not producing the chickens, but I guess the metaphor continues. Okay, the property is located here and Aaron's gone through this. We probably should touch bases before we give congruent presentations, but the facility is in dairy land. If you can tell from, by the site, I wonder if I can, is there a pointer here?
At the opposite one.
Okay. Is located with the little X right here. The site is going to actually run on, this half would be the site that chickens will be, the houses will be initiated in.
Warren, are you going to remove the dairy facility?
That, that is correct. It will, it would be knocked down. It's an older facility and very, very inefficient as far as environmental concerns are. Excuse the slide, Aaron's slide was much better, but it's, it's an L shape that will go over that property and this is kind of what the, the sister site is in Kern County under, under construction. This is the L shape that we're talking about.
Is there any kind of environmental analysis of what's left after the dairy operated in terms of the ground and the ponds and the water and that sort of thing?
In order to put this onsite, it will have to pass the water board inspection to close the facility. But this is state of the art. This is not the barnyard chicken producer.
And there's no slaughter of chickens on the site?
No, there, there's no slaughter. It's an egg-laying facility and the, the eggs are packaged onsite, washed and packaged and shipped. All the, all the mortality is hauled off to a landfill and the, the manure, the waste is a high-end certified, certified organic and currently it is shipped 100% bagged and shipped off-site.
Where do your chickens come from that you bring to the dairy?
The egg.
To the facility. Eat more chicken.
Yeah, they're raised off-site, but shipped in as, as babies. Let me see if I can go. This, this is a cross-section of, of the laying houses. They are three stories. This particular, these particular houses are approximately 70,000 square feet times three, so 210,000 square feet of actual working area. You can, you can get a feel for the, the mechanization here.
So, these are cage-free laying?
Cage-free, yes, sir. Good, good choice, good choice of words. And, and those, and that's certified through several different organizations, including American Humane. But this is, this is egg-laying heaven right here. As you can see here, the, the eggs go in, onto a conveyor and they go one way and the manure comes back and goes the other way, all conveyed out of the barn. Here's the, here's a picture of where the eggs are processed and packaged and ready for shipping.
This facility you're showing, where's that one located?
Kern County. Yeah, this is the only other plant in the United States. This, this is developed across the pond, but this, this is the first one and it's not at full capacity yet, but this is what we're looking at proposing here. This is phase two for this development. The manure comes, the, the eggs go one way, the manure comes the other way and it's, and it's stacked up here. It's under a roof and it is controlled with moisture and temperature control. So, the emissions off-site are greatly reduced. As a comparison, I, I ran some numbers here if you guys want to go over these, what the as-built capacity is of the, the current dairy and then, and our proposal for the poultry. They're summed up here. Here's an example of VOCs. The dairy has a silage facility and poultry will not. So, there's a, there's a net gain of about 34,000 pounds per year of VOCs just off the silage. And then with the NH3 and the, and the PM10s, net effect here, we've got about a 20, on an animal unit basis, we got about a 24% increase in animal units. The, the total animal units on the facility versus converting the, the chickens on a pound per pound basis, it's about a 24% and our, our production is still way under the threshold from the air district. Water usage, the dairy, just the dairy facility and feeding the animals and washing and cooling the milk, we have, the dairy currently uses about 1,087 acre-feet of water per year. The chickens, this is a typo here, I got, I got this changed late. That was based on seven houses. This should actually be 195 acre-feet. So, we're, we're using about 20% of, of what the dairy uses. On energy use, the dairy's using about 3/4 of mag. Chickens will use a 2 mag need, requirement. And, and that's, that's driven by the huge ability, or huge need to cool, cool the chickens. There's, there's a huge amount of fans at one end that, that blow, blow through and create evaporative cooling for the chickens. Effects on the economy, we're, we're increasing on this site about 100, 100 jobs for our county. 80% of those will be 12 to 14 dollars an hour and 20, 20% will be 45 to 100,000 type, type of jobs. Concerns, questions?
I thought it was interesting, we, I visited a little bit before. My family raised chickens for eggs, both my grandfather and uncle. We were never without fresh eggs and without chickens, but things have changed a lot. This was all outside, this is all contained. So, there's very little odor or dust and in the old days, chicken ranchers were pretty nasty neighbors and, but I found it interesting that the chickens my uncle would give us, the chickens, they are sent for something else because they're not, they're not edible. They're healthy, but they're not edible because of flavor, correct? Explain that again.
Yeah, they're, they're bred for laying, they're, they're just like a milk cow is, is bred for milking and a beef cow is for eating. Very similar, good observation.
But you haul these chickens off someplace to be disposed of and they became, become what? When they're, when they quit laying, you know, off for their heads, but they go someplace that doesn't happen on your site.
No, it does not. They're, they're hauled off and in, placed in a certified landfill, that is correct.
So, in the old chicken coop days, you used to have to whitewash the chicken coop. I had to do that for my grandfather. That's a nasty job. So, how do you control disease in that large of a facility?
Disease?
Disease.
I'd have to defer to our egg expert here and he can, he can answer that.
Hello, I'm Bill Sweeney. I reside at 17315 North 64th Lane, Glenville, Arizona. I'm here representing Teleria Ag Holdings on the thing. Just a little quick, quick history that might ask a lot of your questions. There was a, a group of three people, two from the Valley HGR and Kevin Cruz of Western Millings and a Arizona egg grower Hickman's Family Farms out of Tonopah, California, Arizona. And they got together and formed this deal over here and it was the first in Kern County when they come over here. They had built this project with being the first truly greenfield Prop II facility that was here to address the concerns and needs and wants of the population of California. They done that down in Kern County. They've got the first of which they're hoping to be four facilities here in the Central Originally all planned for Kern County, but we've expanded up here and looking for greener pastures, quite frankly, more ag environment. And we found down there that it bounced back and forth between ag's great when oil prices are down and oil prices are up, ag's not so great down there. So, anyway, this facility, I'll explain it a little bit, just start to finish is the chickens are bought out of two primary hatcheries, shipped in as day-old chickens. They reside in the pullet barns for the first 18 weeks of their life and then they're moved into the layhouses at that point. And about the, between the 18th and 20th week, they'll start to produce eggs and that'll mature over the next 10 weeks to where you have your whole house laying eggs. And this is in, as I stated before, it's all a cage-free environment. That's confusing a lot of people. There is nesting areas and laying areas that resemble cages and, but the chickens have the free roam of the particular floor of the three-floor house that they're on and chicken producers don't like, like to admit it, but there is a benefit that is gained from this because of pure sociological separation that you get. The chickens that like each other, hang around with each other and nasty chickens all go be nasty to each other at the end of the barn and segregate each other and, which is a slight increase actually in the eggs that are developed with this particular cage-free system. So, they get, they get in the house and then chickens start laying the eggs. Well, all the manure on a daily basis is moved from the interior of the house to the exterior of the house in the back. Benefit of this particular design, which is one Hickman's came up with in Arizona, developing a lot from solving a neighbor problem. And by having the back of the houses enclosed, there was a huge benefit that was devised that was an unknown benefit at the time. It controlled all the dust and they were able to keep the feather flowed away and didn't have the outside manure, which did a lot of things. But the biggest thing it done is it took that manure and you're inside of a house and where you have the manure deposited inside of a controlled area, it is also dried by the fans that are blowing, the target temperature is 75 to 78 degrees to keep chicken at. So, you're drying that manure with 75 to 78 degree temperatures, which allows the, without getting too technical, the part of the manure you also, you smell, the ammonia, is NH3 and it's converted to NH4. NH4 is stable nitrogen that benefits thing-a-thing. So, you know, kind of a two-fold thing. Yes, very expensive to build the houses the way that we constructed them, but there's also benefits on the manure stream coming out the back door, being tagged now as a natural organic and to have higher nitrogen values helped along with it. So, the manure, every day gets moved to the back. Manure, when it gets to the right dried temperature and the control and stuff, it's taken off-site, which further benefits the whole emissions of VOCs because the whole time it's cooled under a temperature. And by doing that, it does a conversion. So, even when it's transferred and stuff like that, where you normally would get a higher VOC transfer as they're loading trucks and then they put it on the ground somewhere else and, and they go through a slight composting project, a lot of that's bypassed, the particular system they do. On the other side, the eggs are laid. Most people don't realize it, but less than 2/10% of all eggs that end up on a table are touched by human hands before they're cracked open. And this particular facility is state-of-the-art, whether it's the egg grading or, or packaging or anything to where the chicken lays the egg, it rolls off onto a protective belt. That protective belt moves that egg to a transfer belt that transfers it to plant, goes through a washing pro, process. The egg is then sized by weight, inspected for cracks with a series of cameras and ultraviolet lights and then it's put off to be packaged on the thing. Then the packaged materials then are stacked and wrapped, whether you see it in the five dozen flats that go to Costco or individual cartons that go and, and boxed, wrapped, cooled and shipped within 24 hours or shipped out of the plant to particular locations. The only water that's generated from this whole thing is there is the wash water that comes out of the plant, both through the egg wash and the facility wash. And in that particular deal, that water is put at 8,000 to 15,000 gallons of water a day, depending on, you know, if they have an egg crash in the plant and the, the machine that does 600 dozen hours, 600 cases of 30 dozen eggs an hour has a crash, makes a huge mess, takes more water cleanup and a lot more process because they have midday cleanup than out of day cleanup, end of day cleanup in that case. And that water's put into a line pond and it's evaporated. That water is evaporated onsite. Through, through the process, which they haven't got to the point of development stuff, that water in other states is approved to be land-applied to water one-off crops, alfalfa and wheats and stuff like that. That's something they're planning on developing and doing to reuse that water. We haven't, they haven't reached that, that, that point in it. And to address another que, the question that Mr. Miller asked was the inside of the houses are dry cleaned. They go in the house in the process of, of brushing and brooming and, and, and the airflow to the back that has the controlled environment. The back of the, the back of the barns are, have a series of misters on the back of it that, that knock down, I mean, all of the, there, there's no visible emissions that come out of the back of this house. It, the water, when people drive by and they look at it, one of two things happen and depending on where the humidity level's at or just in the general day, they either think there's dust coming out of the back of the house or the thing's on fire. Because when humidity's up the back of it, it just rolls out of there on the thing. And then they have a, a series of, they spray the barn down with disinfectants that have a half-day life. And then they'll go in and the whole barn gets thermal, fogged, dried out prior to putting the chickens in, the, the new flock into that barn and stuff. So, once again, reducing So once again, reducing the water thing and reducing the water thing as well as operationally, that makes for a lot better thing because unfortunately, when they do, they used to do wet cleaning of barns, you increase the chance of disease because you add one of the three elements, which is you have to have the dirty spot, moisture, and temperature creates bacteria. So the dry cleaning eliminates the introduction of that. I'll be glad to ask any other questions or if we missed anything.
So what's the difference between an organic egg and a non-organic egg? We see that in the stores. Which one do you do at this facility?
Got to be careful not to step on anybody's toes, but let's just say marketing's a big part of it. And in order to label an egg organic, and it can be organic of any level, it could be an organic commodity egg, which everybody's grown out of an enriched cage, it could be a cage-free organic, or it could be a range-free organic, which is literally chickens out in the pasture. And you do that by what the chickens consume. Your water has to be straight-filtered water, out of the ground, no treatment, no nothing. The, all the feed has to be certified organic, they go into feeding that. And back to the brooding process, the brooding chickens all have to also have been on an all-organic raising.
For the feed at this plant, what's it going to be?
The feed at this plant is not, we do not, do not label the organic. The feed here from this plant all comes from the Central Valley here, from one of the three owners, which is Western Milling. And it's, it is not an organic, it's just a standard straight.
So it consists of what exactly?
Um, you know, before I built this chicken ranch here and stuff, I hadn't had nothing to do with a chicken farm. And I've got quite an education over the last two and a half years. And I was more around the dairy business and stuff, managing dairy farms and doing different things. And on a dairy farm, and I'm just getting to where it's tough to answer your thing, but there's two-hundred-and-fourteen different formulas they have down at the Kern County. The different formulas in the feeds, chickens are very inefficient on the conversion of food to egg, but super efficient on any additives and stuff that are in there, the amino acids and things and hence all the different things. So if the eggshells get, if the eggshells get soft and the yolks get too clear, there's one feed and just a bunch of things. But the primary feed is soy and corn is a primary element in it and limestone, there's limestone in any chicken's diet.
So the difference between what you do in your facility and when they have chickens out in the field eating grass, they call those free-range, and those eggs are coming with a different kind of a feed then, but it's all still called organic. It's either certified or it's not certified.
There is, there is, and in my education through the last two and a half years, I've not read a study or found anybody that tells me how you test an egg, other than they have been able to say, okay, you've fed more amino acids and your egg's enriched amino acids and there's a couple elements that are, there's absolutely no way to take an egg after you break it open and you pour it in a Petri dish and tell what they've eaten, except for certain elements that do show through the egg. So the certification is all from documentation that brings you to that point. And you know, one of the conflicts that you could have with organic is, as somebody being in the farming industry out here know that in the United States, organic is a record-keeping process from the time the seed has started to develop till the seeds plant it, all the way to the table, there's documentation that does it. There's a lot of imports that are allowed in this country that other nations certify organic and they certify organic by no trace prior to shipping. So it's a matter of documentation to worry how you certify your eggs and what they are.
Have to be able to answer our grandchildren's questions, that's why I was asking.
Mr. Sweeney, where does waste for four million chickens go every day?
Uh, there's actually, there's several companies that bid, like I say, we're very fortunate that we have a nitrogen account that's several points higher than the comparison, so it's a competitive bidding situation. There's presently a contract with True Organics, which is a California company out of South Bakersfield area, somewhere I believe they are. And they're under contract to haul that all out of there, but Warren was right in the majority of this manure because of the value, it's processed in such a way to where it's screened, where all the feathers are out and it looks like a nice fertilizer that's packaged. And it goes through things like Miracle Grow, has a large amount of chicken manure in it. So a lot of it does go bagged and go to the general public, a lot of it goes bagged and goes to greenhouse-type operations. And a certain percentage of it is straight field-applied. And most of the stuff field-applied is the stuff that's screened out and doesn't look quite as pretty as the stuff they're going to put in a bag and have your wife scoop it out with a little thing and fill a pot. You know, one other thing that I just wanted to clarify, the, Bill was absolutely right because in the old days, chickens were growing and the genetics over the years have raised these chickens, just like they do in the dairy industry, to where these chickens are developed to be the highest-producing egg producers, they are and stuff. Problem with the meat that comes out is they're lean, it's extremely lean. I don't know if any of you guys ever bought a kid's show animal from a fair, but try to fry bacon off of a pig that's been raised to be completely lean and look right and you don't have no grease in the pan afterward. Unfortunately, the grease, as we all know, is what we like to taste and something. So these chickens and stuff all come out of there and they all grow to rendering plants and it's turned into animal protein that's both fed to all kinds of animals, whether it's zoo animals, dairy, a big part of it goes to the dog food industry on the thing.
That brings up a question I've always wanted to know. What happens with these millions and millions of little baby roosters that are hatched every day? Sucks to be a rooster, that's for sure.
Two things happen to roosters. They've done a lot of development over the years to where the roosters have become more and more viable to be broilers, table meat and stuff, so there's a certain amount of that does that. And then, then in the past, the majority of them were just purely cold and literally have a person that sits there and inspects the chicken and puts it as a rooster or a hen and they ship it off. But just like cattle and stuff, though, that industry has worked tremendously on being asexual and they're not as successful as the dairy industry to be in the high ninety percent, but they're getting better and better at having just hens.
Somebody told me they ground them up and fed them back to the females.
Um, you know, I haven't looked in that part of it, but you know, being around farmers all my life, it's not going in the trash if they can find some way to use them.
Mr. Sweeney, one other question. In your quality control and light treatment through the eggs, and I'm assuming you're calling out the double yolkers and stuff, do you run into any parthogenic eggs in there?
No, no, it's, that's so, that's bred out. But on the double-yolk eggs, they're sorted out and hence why the birds, the birds are put in the house and eighty to a hundred and two weeks is when they change the birds out. And the biggest thing is, is the genetics are there and they hold those chickens to about two-point-seven-five to three pounds and for a particular reason of producing eggs. And as they start to get bigger, as they get older and older, you can't fight Mother Nature, they're going to get bigger. And what happens is you're, pretty soon as you go through and you, you have a, you know, so far down there, they've been very fortunate and the new raring and the new cage system that we have, the only one of, in the United States at this time, the mortality of a flock across the whole time is eight to twelve percent of the total birds. And we've been lucky to be below that, that average. And as chickens get bigger, they lay bigger eggs, bigger eggs come double yolks and stuff and you get in a situation to where about only three percent of the total table eggs that are sold are jumbo. Majority of them's large and extra-large. And large is just a precursor to years and years of mom writing one large egg on her recipe and that's passed on and it's respected in the food industry. An egg's considered a large egg, which they're all, a large egg is sixty-two grams. And that's the only way they have to sort eggs is there's, the grading machine has a series of scales and they weigh the eggs and the grading machine separates the eggs by size and packages them. At the same time, anything's got to check in at a crack that you can't see by your human eye. And double yolks, mis-shaped egg, all that's picked up by the cameras and the ultraviolets and they're sorted out and they go to a breaker plant where it's just raw eggs. And breaker plants, McDonald's for example, McDonald's adds an additional thirteen percent yolk to their eggs that they scramble, just because they want a more rich yellow color. So that's kind of where they, that stuff goes.
I know it's come a long ways from my grandfather and uncle. I hated to go out to those chicken coops, the manure underneath like this and they had to shovel it by hand and had flies, there'd be flies like you wouldn't believe.
Yeah, and you, well, that's the, there's the whole moisture thing. A chicken excretes both the manure and the urine together at one passage. And we're trying to catch up the air district and stuff, but all the numbers that they use and stuff assume what they call a high-rise house. High-rise house used to be one, two, three, four, five, six layers, six cages high, as many birds stuffed in there, and then a big basement underneath. All that manure fell down through all the cages to the basement area and generally wasn't clean until the end of the flock. And that's where you get your high VOCs and all that stuff is from the old style, but we've, we're working with air district, we've done some source testing and stuff for them and hopefully we can get them some new numbers that...
A good industry for Tulare County, so it's clean.
It's tremendously, tremendously different than it used to be.
I think the main thing is the water usage is incredible for the history of Tulare County and here and where we're going and, you know, this thousand eighty-seven acre feet of the dairy compared to this one-ninety-five in the chicken operation, is this, I mean, we're talking about one bankrupt dairy here, is this a trend in the, in the ag industry? Are we going to see more of this kind of thing where the dairies are not being sustainable because of water usage or whatever?
Yeah, the water usage on eggs is, there's two different levels. Each bird, a bird consumes about the same amount of feed as they do water a day, which is two-point-two pounds per thousand of food that they eat in a day. So the amount of water is extremely low there, then a lot of the water is evaporated through the cooling system and that. And the dairy industry, because, you know, seventy-eight percent of milk is water. So that's, that's not going to go away, but the, I don't, this particular dairy failure was probably most directed to nineteen-fifties technology, as you could see by the triangle shape that they had and just old, wore-out dairy that cost more to update than to move on to the next property. And this particular dairy has ate through a couple dairy families in the, in the recent years trying to do it. And this particular last one was Eliseve that didn't, didn't quite make it and it's down with management. And right now, as you, I don't, you may or may not know, California had their own milk order, which milk order is what controls the pricing difference between what the dairyman sells it for and what it's sold for at the supermarket. And there, they had a very beneficial situation, but also the worst in the, in the country because highs were highs, there was no middle. So you're either making a bunch of money or making no money and, as you guys probably know from being in the Valley, that's, right now, they're in a no-money situation and California's actually considering going back on the federal milk order, which, which has more of a thing instead of these big peaks and valleys for the dairy people.
Yeah, Sonny Perdue, when he was here at Egg Expo, was talking about that, his little message, that that's where California needs to go.
Yeah, and they're going that direction now.
Mr. Sweeney, can you tell me how this operation's going to affect the bankruptcy? Is it going to make the creditors whole or help to make them whole?
The bankruptcy right now is, is in, I'm not involved with that part of the land operations and stuff, but all I do know on the peripheral is that the, it's in receivership, the bankruptcy's in receivership and the bank is standing right there just wanting to foreclose and take control. But what's going to happen is there's going to be a thinning of the herd, the good cattle's are going to move on to dairymen, which absolutely the dairyman, last thing they need is more cattle right now, but that's just, that industry unfortunately, they'll, they'll pick up the milking cows and the dry cows and they'll be redistributed around on the thing, but it's in the process to where they're going to, they're, I have been out there myself in a month or so, if they haven't already started thinning the herd, they will on the thing, just because whoever's in control, whoever the designee is, is, first thing they do is they come in there, evaluate what makes sense to keep, not keep, and move out, then they'll milk the healthy cows out till where that doesn't make sense.
Saying the lessee is in bankruptcy and it's not the landowner?
It's lessee, absolutely. No, third-party owns land. Yeah, which is, the principals in Tulare Land Holding is Kevin Cruz, the founder and lender now that it's a ESOP for Western Milling.
Appreciate it, we learned a lot listening to you.
I think you went over your three-minute limit.
To the chair, that was part of the staff's presentation, that was not part of the public hearing.
When will that facility, that egg-land facility be built?
What's that?
When will that be open and operational, that facility?
Um, we were able to build the one down in Kern County and probably it was about twenty-eight months to full occupation, moved first chickens in in about four to six months, but let's say we're restrained by certain building requirements and stuff that, that nobody in the country is subjected to on agricultural project down there.
You'll love Tulare County because we get you your permits in a timely manner. We'll guarantee that.
You get that opening, you'll be, you'll be making some good money out of that place.
It, the egg business is a, is a big economical boost, put it that way. They're, you know, you don't think much about it, but we're, they're going to be doing a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dozen eggs a day out of that plant. And it don't, it don't take much math to go in and look, it doesn't cost, it costs about five percent more to raise cage-free eggs because the building costs depreciate over twenty-five years and the commodity eggs at the supermarket. It don't take a lot of math to see that it works very well in the margin and the difference you see in what you're paying for cage-free ones. I appreciate you guys' time. I've got scolded once, I'm not going to get scolded again. Appreciate any support you can give us. Thank you.
Yeah, this is stage two. We got approved here, we're looking for another two facilities to build, guys. So hopefully Tulare County is friendly, this is my home, I'd love to see a couple more facilities here, so keep an open mind as we go forward. Thank you guys for your time.
Some more failed dairies.
Three a day.
So that completes staff's presentation, if you did want to open up the public hearing.
This time we will open the public hearing for the minor modification. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we will close the public. And so the recommendation is up on top there if somebody would like to?
This is the kind of thing I think we're going to see and this is a good project, what I'm feeling right here. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the categorical exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act sequel pursuant to Title Fourteen, California Code Regulation, Section One Five Zero Six One, and approve the minor modification number M I M one eighteen dash zero twenty-one.
I'll second that motion.
Don?
Uh, yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
I can't.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I grew up across the street from an egg ranch.
Egg White's are okay.
Early market. And I can tell you what they did to the chickens back then.
We don't need that anymore. Whatever it was, we don't.
Well, I have an ironic twist in this story, too. My, the grandfather on our property in Three Rivers had a chicken house. And the thing was, is that chickens free-ranged all day in the pasture, and then at night, they were put in the house, because we have mountain lions and bears and things like that that come down. So, we no longer use the chicken house, of course, and there's a lot of people around Three Rivers that now build chicken coops. And they, they're wire little structures where all the critters come down and, and eye those chickens as their next meal. So, the ironic thing is, we've had a proposal to turn the chicken house into a vacation rental. It's a 1930's structure with six individual compartments, and it's really not such a bad idea. Come stay at a chicken house.
There you go.
But anyway, that's just one of the, one of the full circle we've come in this.
They also have a place in Nevada called The Chicken Ranch, I think that's different.
You've been there.
Tell my, you told me about it in your newsletter.
Through the chair, it's director's report, all right.
This woman, where's The Chicken Ranch?
Yeah, through the chair, director's report.
The one in Nevada?
Director's report, no.
Okay.
We're ready for you. Uh, Mr. Wasserman's giving me the floor. So, as far as what we're working on right now, we, like I stated before, we're continuing to work on three more community plans. And continue to work on a updated Dollar General EIR. And those are two of the biggest pressing items right now is the Sequoia Gateway EIR and the Dollar General EIR. And as stated last time, we will be before the commission after the release of the Sequoia Gateway EIR to do a workshop on that, that project with you. It was just reported to the Visalia EDC. They did have a discussion on the Sequoia Gateway project with PEC planning. So, yeah, but I, before we get into actually talking to you a little bit more about it, we'd like to have the EIR on the street. Outside of that, we went through some of our budget's numbers this last year, and it looked like we did, besides the 600 projects, we did pretty well on our actual budgets, too, compared to salaries and overhead. So, not that we're, we're plus, but we're, we're breaking even on that front. When you look at the, what was budgeted versus what was projected, we'll see where the actuals roll in, but it was a pretty good, pretty good year overall. And we'll continue to do the same in trying to be sustainable with our costs and, and what we bring in. We are one of the few agencies that does have so much funding through our own efforts. So, as long as we continue to get permits rolling in, I think we'll, we'll do fairly well, even if there was a slight downturn in the economy. Outside of that, that's all I really had to add. There was a question last time about, was it SHIRK? And whether that was city-maintained or county-maintained, and whether it needed, that was the city, city section. So, we notified them that there was concerns about potholes in that area. But, yeah, that was the, the city's responsibility overall.
Takes care of the whole road there?
In, in that area, right there, yeah.
Well, speaking of money from outside sources, we had the Mineral King Bridge meeting last night in Three Rivers. And it was interesting, because the project could cost from seven to 10 million by the time it's all said and done and built, and it's not a penny of local money being used there, it's all coming from the Fed. So, that's gonna be a huge feather in the county's cap.
Well, it is taxpayer dollars coming back to it.
Well, I understand, I understand that, but other places pay a lot more than us, I can tell you that.
I, I'd just like, through the chair, just one, one project that is a major, again, environmentally friendly as it relates to dairies, is the Pixie Biogas Cluster, where they're covering the lagoons and, and sending it to the Calgary facility. The first dairy is online now, so they're at the point where they're starting to produce that and, and that. So, we're probably gonna do some sort of a PR type of release as, as the county's also buying a couple gas buses, new buses. So, we might do something, we might purchase and fill up our bus based off the first gas out of that facility. So, that's something to look forward to, probably in the coming weeks or months.
Be a good start.
And we'll also have the other grants that Fort Creeks was working on. Some of those facilities do require use permits. So, next meeting, you'll have four, four use permits regarding digesters and the, where, where all the gas comes together, and so those require use permits.
I've been working with our MA staff on Goshen. Goshen is potentially has, you know, I think has great possibilities, and I want to know that our staff, our MA staff are working to make some of those unpleasant uses go away. But the, you know, the west side, there's a, some sort of animal confinement facility with goats and mules and horses behind the Sinclair gas station that doesn't seem to be in operation anymore. There's piles of wood, there's motels, and yet, then you've got Harley-Davidson, who put a lot of money in that site. So, there's a lot of potential there. I don't know what we, as planning commissioners, can do to help, help it out. But with the Betty Drive-off ramp, there's gonna be some major developments on those corners that are bound to lead to some improvement in the look of Goshen. And we, as real estate brokers, are hearing that housing in Goshen has a big potential for people who live in Fresno, 'cause housing is just not affordable there. And so, the big Amazon distribution plant, people are willing to drive to Tulare County to live, to get decent housing, so it's gonna have some impact. The other thing I hear is that Amazon is, has all these jobs, and some are pretty good-paying, but they're having difficulty finding employees. I think you told me that, Wayne, right, the, the Amazon? And anyway, I think Goshen has a great possibility. I, I don't know what else we can do to help the situation out, but county is working on it, so.
Oh, yes, if the commissioners did wanna notify us to any potential code violations, that continues to be a helpful way to address that issue.
There's the animal confinement thing behind the Sinclair, that's kind of a joke, but it's a bunch of stalls with lots of animals, so.
That's Chad Dafte, owns that gas.
I, I love the guy, he's really good, so.
He owns that gas station, huh?
He's Wayne's friend.
That completes the director's report.
Anyone else here? Commissioners? Then I think we're done for the day.
Good job, boss.